Good afternoon, everyone. I call to order the business meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Public Education for November 16th, 2022. Ms. Wagner, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bolton, Mr. Craig?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Dr. Moffett?
Here.
Mr. Murawski?
Here.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Here.
This is what is typically a committee of the whole meeting for our board, and so we do not have a hearing of the public this evening, so I will skip this part where I usually read those instructions. The next item we have on our agenda, a short agenda this afternoon, is a reminder of our three-month board priorities. I want to just remind folks who are here with us tonight in person or who are watching at home that all year, our board has decided over about a three-month time period, what are the areas where we most want to see important progress happen, and then we've provided updates to the public over the course of that three-month period on how we're doing. So for these past three months, I won't read them, but you'll see the five that are on there. We have now passed the November 8th end date for those priorities. I think as most folks up here know, I've been out of the office the last couple of weeks because of the death of my dad, and so I don't have a formal process or presentation set up here tonight for these. Still, I think we could probably share a brief update to the public, and so I'm going to propose just a quick overview of how I see where we are on these five, and then just invite anybody who has a different perspective to share it with us. So on governance, my proposal is that this is green. We are on track to adopt goals and guardrails by the 5th of December, and we'll have a good conversation about that tonight. For strategic planning, I was going to propose we call this yellow. I think we've had several good and important conversations, but we need to nail down what our final process is going to be yet, which we haven't done yet. So I'm going to suggest yellow, because we're close but not quite there. On transportation, I would also suggest we call this yellow. I think there's no question that we've seen improvements since last year, particularly when it comes to metro, and I also think it's very clear that we're still not where we want to be, particularly as it comes to driver shortage on yellow bus. The levy, proud to report and excited to share that the voters approved our levy on Election Day, so thank you, and want to call that green. And then I would also suggest that on community and parent engagement, we call that green. I think there's a wonderful financial town hall schedule, some of which have already happened. There were over 20 focus groups conducted as a part of our community engagement on the goals and guardrails discussion, and there was a wonderful joint meeting with Cincinnati City Council and the school board that took place last week. Though on community engagement and parent engagement, I think a lot of good progress forward. So I was going to suggest green, yellow, yellow, green, green, and I just wanted to see if anybody sees any of that differently. Hearing nothing, okay. Maybe I should just do it this way every time, and we'll have some efficiency wins. We're going to move on to the next item on our agenda, which is item C, and it's listed here as two items. I think it'll probably feel like one big item rather than two smaller ones, but we're going to be joined by two of our governance coaches, Cindy and Ray. Welcome. Thank you for being here. Rob, do we have them in the Blue Jeans meeting? Great, well, we can invite in Cindy, and I think Ray will be joining us shortly.
Hello.
And Ray, great, we'll turn things over to them.
Wonderful. Yeah, I anticipate Ray to join when he is... Oh, there he is. Hello, Ray. We are excited to be here to talk about the goals and guardrails process after you've had your community engagement and outreach along with your community survey out, and you've all received the summary analysis of both the listening session notes as well as the Vision and Value Survey. And just wanted to open it up to the board to talk about what you're noticing, both by way of the summary, the listening session notes, and even just your experiences with conducting the listening sessions and having those conversations with your community. And Ben, I'll count on you to make sure that folks who want to speak are called on.
That sounds great. Cindy, would you say the question just one more time? And for everybody who's here, if it's helpful to have a hard copy of the results of the community engagement, we have those here. Everybody got a soft copy either on Monday... Nope, just on Monday. So you have it on your computer, but if anybody wants a hard copy, we have a couple here as well. Great, so would you pass those down to Mr. Murawski? And Cindy, would you say the question just one more time?
I sure will, yeah. So maybe I'll just completely start over. Tonight, can you all hear me well enough?
Yes.
You sound great.
Great. So during this meeting, we'll go over several things for the goals and guardrails. You've received the synopsis summaries of both your listening session notes, along with the full set of listening session notes, and then the community survey summary as well. And you have also received some information from Superintendent Wright regarding interim goals, interim guardrails, and baseline and target information on your goals. The way we're going to start is first by looking at that community input, at the synopsis and summary documents, and I want to open it up to the board to talk about what you're noticing on the summaries of that information, and also open it up to talk about your experiences and actually holding those conversations, having those listening sessions with your community.
Thanks, Cindy. So I think what I heard was, what did people notice in the community feedback? And then also, if anyone has any reflections on what it was like to hold those focus groups, feel free to share those as well. Anybody want to get us started? Mrs. Weinberg?
I'll just be very brief. What I can say from the focus groups that I either led or that I was the note taker in, I thought the focus groups, they did a really good job of really engaging and answering the questions and letting us know from their mindset what it is that they wanted to see changed, what they liked, or even in terms of our goals and our guardrails, some of the wording of the different goals and guardrails that we could take into consideration to make it a little bit more better for our families and our district. So I thought overall it was a good process. I really enjoyed reading through some of the comments to kind of see some of the repeat things that individuals and the different, I guess, focus groups had to say, so that's my piece.
Thanks, Mrs. Weinberg. I think Vice President Jones?
Yes, thank you. I think that, for me personally, I personally got a lot out of and value very much the engagement with our community. I think there were... One of the things I was very pleased with is that there were lots of people who otherwise would not have engaged with us, and I think with the type of outreach to contact them and what have you, to bring them in, now gives us the opportunity to continue to reach out to them and engage them in other processes that we have. And also, many of them expressed interest, and I think we all agreed to that, that many of them expressed interest in continuing to dialogue with the board and the district as a whole about ongoing concerns and things like this. They got lots of positive feedback about the format for the session, so calling in for a session with people like themselves or who share some common themes. So that part was good. In terms of the information that was gathered, I saw a lot of similarity across many of the groups. So, you know, even though their backgrounds were very different, a lot of similar concerns, things we did well across the broader section, cross-section of the constituents and people that were engaged. So overall, I was very satisfied with the engagement sessions. There were pockets where I wish we could have gotten more folks engaged, but that's something I think we have to work on.
Thanks, Vice President Jones. Other board members, either comments on what it was like to do the focus groups or what you noticed in reading through some of the summaries? Mr. Murawski?
Thank you, President Lindy. I would just say for my part, I mean, what I noticed, from the sessions that I was a part of, and then just looking through these, there's a lot of continuity, and one of the things I think was so cool about doing the sessions was hearing how interested people are in all of the kids in the city succeeding. But a lot of what the community touched on, and I don't think this is terribly surprising because of the engagement we did for the superintendent's job description, but it hit on a lot of the items that we talked about when we interviewed for the superintendent position, and we talked about up here, and specifically, the whole child piece came up a lot in the ones I was in, and I see it reflected in some of the other ones. Mental health in the community came up frequently. The community engagement piece in the racial achievement, and I think, again, in the groups I was in and what it seems like in here, people were happy to see that that called out as readily as it was in the items that we proposed to them. And then the other thing I heard specifically in ours, which was community partners, organized labor leaders, the ones that I was a part of, but also spread throughout, people asking to have... And we talk about this actually in Policy Committee, a decent amount too, and we talk about LSTMCs and community learning centers, but almost like a menu of items of what does CPS do, particularly when we were talking with our nonprofit partners, Brandon and myself, said, oh, so what should CPS keep doing that it doesn't like? We don't know what they do. No, I'm not saying that's our fault. We do, you know, we send a lot of stuff, and maybe we send too much, I don't know. So I mean, this is a two-way street. People need to read the items and pick up the phone, so... But I did hear that, like, so what if we had like a menu of what do we offer at this place, at this place? And again, I know we've talked about this in committee too, so... But those were some of the common threads I saw.
Thanks, Mr. Murawski. Other, Dr. Moffett or Mr. Craig? You don't have to, but if you'd like.
I really, I appreciate the survey from a researcher's standpoint. It was really great to do. I do think it was a little wordy sometimes, and reading the script was just tough because it just was extremely wordy, especially for the kids. It was, I saw them check out, and I was like, okay, guys, hold on, hold on with me for just a second. And then when we got to the section where it was like, okay, now we'll talk about your parking lot item, they all put down their phones, they started engaging, so it was a little wordy, and I wish that it had catered more to... I don't know if it's to be less wordy or just more of the culture of Cincinnati rather than to be so formalized, that part needed to be worked on. The themes, I think, were super consistent as far as across everyone. I think it was very difficult, but it was accomplished that people did not talk about current issues. They talked about overarching goals, and it wasn't clear in the instructions that these are goals from the boards of the superintendent. And once we took that off the paper and clarified that for people, that seemed to help. And I had to do that in almost every one of my sessions and just share, okay, this is from the board to the superintendent. This is not our engagement, this is not the strategic plan. Once we did that, they were able to put the questions in context, and that's why I said it was a little wordy, because they needed that context as to what it was, what are we actually doing this for? Because that's a process that we've not done with regard to goals, and so this was new, and they weren't revamping anything, we were creating it, and I just don't think that that was clear. I would have liked to have seen it in multiple languages and perhaps even over a broader period of time so that it didn't feel so rushed. I do feel like we were trying to get things in, and with regard to outreach versus... What was it? Outreach versus the two different processes? Going to the people in their meeting versus... I think that that, for me, that did not feel as successful as I think it was intended to be. I think the community doesn't see it that way. While I think that, I understand the definitions, I was a participant when President Lindy and Vice President Jones came to the NAACP session, and they left, and it felt rushed. And I think, again, they had to come off script because they were coming into an environment where it wasn't clear what their role was, and they rushed them through. The timing was too much. So I think for our community, sticking with having the sessions be consistent versus trying to, and offering more of them, again, for this community, I wish it had been a little bit more catered to the Cincinnati culture and how things have historically been done, not necessarily with no room for improvement, but because we've gotten engagement that way, I think that would have been a little helpful. But I'm very happy with our start. I think this is a great foundation. Again, I would just like to see engagement across cultures. So we have a huge Hispanic culture. We could have done more engagement there and with our other cultures. I do think we've got, we could have had more student engagement, which we did not have enough of. I think our parents, some engaged, some didn't. It just, there were pockets where there were significant pieces missing, but I thought overall it was good.
Thank you, Dr. Moffett. Anything, Mr. Craig?
Yeah, I'll add just a couple of things. I think one of the things that I did notice, and to maybe Mr. Murawski's point, I think a lot of folks did not know two things about this process. One, what does CPS do? Because I don't think I got a whole lot of answers to what are we doing well that we should keep doing in any of the sessions? You know, like, that was your smallest section of answers, and I think that's in part because everybody thinks about all the stuff that they don't like, more so than they ever think about the stuff they do like. But I also think that is in part to Mr. Murawski's point of, we don't always have a bunch of information out there in front of everybody's vision to say, here's what each school does. Here are the great programs at every school, like, here are all the things that they're doing, and in a lot of ways, it affected, I think, some of the conversations we got. The other part to it in my experience with doing it and being the note taker in several situations was also, I think we tapped into a lot of different areas of folks, but one of the struggles is that when you tap into a lot of different areas, they come at it from a perspective that's really focused around what they want and what they use the district for. And in a lot of ways, we could have maybe communicated what the board does and what the board is doing with this process a little bit better, because I think a lot of folks thought of us as just being the district. And so it became, you know, we're talking about what the board can set as goals, what the board can communicate out, you know, board's not going to come in and teach tomorrow. So when, or the board's not going to go out and create a new curriculum around the subject matter, when someone says, oh, this would be great if you had this. I mean, those are things we can bring back to this superintendent, but in some ways, it also felt like we were, just felt like a little weird role in what our role is as a board and what we were asking to do in the goals part versus the first part, where folks were throwing out everything but the kitchen sink for their ideas. I think the other thing, and I think everybody's kind of said this in some ways also, is that the comments that people gave and some of the feedback and the synopsis in that tells us that there are a lot of parts to what we were looking at at goals that folks are really concerned about and really want to help with and really want to be a part of. And so in some ways, there's got to be a way to communicate that it's not just that we have this goal, but that there's so much that goes into that goal that is going to be a part of that process, and that that's what they should be holding us accountable for. It's not just meeting the goal, but how we meet the goal. And so I think some of it is more of just the language that we use to present the goals and guardrails going forward to our community, because I don't want people to think that we didn't hear them, but I also don't want people to think that we decided that, you know, tomorrow the goal is no longer that third grade English, that it's third grade everything, and that we're going to do all these other parts because that's the only way you get to good English skills, is that, yes, we know that. That's actually part of the reason we came to some of these points. And so I thought it was really good conversation, but I do think framing it, and sometimes in a way, can help us give them the guidance as to what we are there to do and what we as a board can do and can control.
Thanks, Mr. Craig. A lot of what I was going to share has been said. I think the only thing I'll add is, I was struck by how much consistency there was in the themes that came out of this community engagement and some of the things that we heard doing the superintendent search. I would offer just a couple of examples, and I think Mr. Murawski touched on some of these, but that people care deeply about the whole child, and that includes absolutely can people read and do math on grade level, but it also means, like, are they graduating with access to a meaningful career of their choice? And it also means are schools rich places around extracurricular, like, all the things... I think there's meaningful overlap, really, both between the superintendent search and with what the current draft is. Not perfect, but I think there's a lot of overlap. Another one that came up that I don't know has been mentioned yet is just the importance of strong communication and people feeling heard. That's something that came up during the superintendent search. It's something that came up in this community engagement. It's something that's reflected in at least one of the guardrails in its current version. And that was encouraging to me to see, okay, there is some consistency here, this is important, let's focus on it, and let's make it better. So Cindy, does that get you some answers for that first set of questions?
Yes, it does, and I appreciate... I was taking notes as you all were speaking around what you saw what improvements could be, and I think some things that might go some ways as you all go out to or decide how you will communicate once you have adopted goals and guardrails, how you're going to communicate what you did here and why you did land on that. So that, I really appreciate all the comments, and I think that, I think that that sets us up for the next portion of the discussion then, which is to actually use that data, the community input that you've gathered, as well as what Superintendent Wright has provided around her thinking, to look at the draft goals and guardrails that you've developed so far, and have a discussion about what you're thinking around keeping, deleting, or modifying any of those five draft goals and guardrails. And I'd like to actually start with the guardrails rather than the goals. So if you take out the, or refer to the document that Superintendent Wright provided, and the draft guardrails are on the last page of that, and what I want to do is give Superintendent Wright an opportunity to explain her thinking around the bulleted points that you see under each of those guardrails, and then, you know, give you an opportunity to ask for any further clarity on that, and then start the discussion around whether or not you see these guardrails as still being relevant to what you know about your community's values. Does that all... Does anyone have any questions about that?
Cindy, I'm sorry that my brain is working really slowly. Can you just say the question?
Any questions about what we're going to do next? Looking at the, giving Superintendent Wright an opportunity to explain her thinking around guardrail measures, around interim guardrails, and then that along with the community input, determining each, looking at each of the five guardrails and determining whether or not the board believes that these are still the right guardrails. So first, giving Superintendent Wright an opportunity to speak to the information she's provided.
That sounds great. And then just for point of clarification, Cindy, do you want us to just, we start with guardrail one, Superintendent Wright shares, and then we share, should we have Superintendent Wright go through all five?
Why don't we have Superintendent Wright go... Would it work to go through all five and just hear the thinking behind all of that and then go one by one? Or is there a...
I think, I think for me, it might, just for this part, it might be easier to go through each of them individually so that we have the discussion as we talk about them, just so that we know what those thoughts were.
Sounds great.
Okay. So one thing that I will share, and good afternoon, everyone. So I provided the interim goals and the interim guardrails based on the draft goals and guardrails. After that, on yesterday afternoon, yesterday evening, I had some follow-up conversation with Cindy and understood that what I provided were more targets in terms of thinking about where we may look to end by the end of the year, that particular year, versus the interim goal, i.e. the assessment or the information that we might look at throughout the year. So there wasn't a change for that for the guardrails, but when we get to the goals part, I did add some additional information, just because we would look at, you know, additional assessment data throughout the year, that was, not just the target information at the end. So for the first guardrail, this one was probably the most challenging for me in terms of thinking about what might go here in terms of interim guardrails, simply because as I looked through the guardrail, the superintendent shall not implement changes to the curriculum or educational resources without conducting a fiscal analysis for the change. It appears to be more of a process improvement, an improvement of information that's provided, an expectation around the equity frame that we'll use in terms of information that's being provided. So it was hard for me to determine what the board might want to see in terms of this. So I thought we would include ROI information with each of our funding requests, and so a couple of times a year, we would monitor that. We would monitor it more regularly, but the thought is, if we're monitoring guardrails at the same time that we're monitoring goals, my hope would be that we come to consensus or agreement that we would do that along with each of the assessment periods. So beginning of the year assessments, we would review, and then middle of the year assessments, we would review, and then, of course, at the end of the year, we would determine whether or not we met that particular target. So my hope would be that we are on the same kind of cadence for the guardrails as well, so that it just becomes, you know, we're monitoring the goals and guardrails at the same time. So that was my thought around that one. I don't know if there was other feedback for what the board would be looking for in that space or not, or if that's a guardrail that we think needs to still remain a guardrail.
Thank you, Superintendent Wright. Mr. Craig?
So one of the things that I noticed, at least in the sessions that I sat through and in a couple that I read, was that there was that question about why was that one the only thing we were asking for it to be done? And so I think maybe if there's a way for us to reframe that to be a more holistic review of changes that includes the financial, or the fiscal analysis as well as, you know, academic successful, or whatever academic success or something else that is added into that might make it broader, then also allows more opportunities for you to be able to establish what those guardrails might be. Or, because it was really just one thing that we put into that one, which I think we thought about it for a reason, but what I'm hearing from some of the feedback was, well, so what about other things besides just the fiscal analysis? Like, are you just going to decide that CPS can't afford it, and then we don't do it? Or kind of what does that mean?
Yeah, can you...
I'm just saying, if we broaden it out to a more holistic analysis, it has to be done for changes, right? So that we say that you would not implement changes to the curriculum or educational resources without conducting a, you know, a full analysis that includes, you know, fiscal review, you know, an equity assessment, or something else that would also be included in that, so that it then broadens it out a little bit, which gives the superintendent a little bit more room to create the interim guardrails, but also communicates that there are other priorities just besides just fiscal to when we make educational curriculum changes.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. One clarifying question, and other people may have clarifying questions, too. The fifth guardrail has a piece in there about not allowing the inequitable distribution of resources. Are you suggesting merging this with that one, or is it important enough, it still needs to stand on its own? I mean, I can imagine a world in which these are just things that the district starts to do, or it could be important enough that we need it as its very own one, and I am perspectiveless on which of those is the right way to move forward.
Yeah, I don't necessarily have a particular perspective, so I'm hoping... So I'm open to others' thoughts on that. I do think the fifth one's slightly different, but I don't know that it's substantially different enough that we would, you know, the resources include other things besides just the curriculum resources. But I don't know that we need to delineate that separate from the others.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. Other board members? Vice President Jones?
Yes. I was trying to, as best as I could, understand where Board Member Craig was coming from. But I think when you added that about number five, I think one of the overarching concerns or comments that we heard about consistently was about inequitable resources. And so when you asked the question, was there a way to combine it? For me personally, it almost makes sense to figure out how to combine it because I think leveling and inequitable resources does require a level of fiscal analysis and those variables that are there would certainly, I had to scroll down and say, ah, that actually makes sense from a fiscal analysis perspective. So if there's a way to change the wording, but have that, and I don't know what the final wording would look like, but to me, they are very similar. And they're similar because when we're talking inequitable distribution of resources, it absolutely requires fiscal analysis in pretty much everything that we do. So does that make sense? I hope it does.
Thank you, Vice President Jones. Dr. Moffett?
So one thing, I think the public likes to see Cindy and Ray, but I think they would probably be more appreciative if they could see this on the screen, that what we're looking at too. So can we pull this up so that it can be visible to everybody to be able to see what we're looking at as far as guardrails?
I think that's a good suggestion. Rob, do you need it? Or Cindy, are you able to share your screen in such a way?
I'll send it to Rob just because I have the updates from the other one.
Okay, that's great. So I think Cindy, what Rob will share from Superintendent.
So my other thing is one of the things that I think I heard about in probably 90% of the sessions is the comment that these are negative and that they didn't like the thou shalt not, the superintendent will not. One session even said that it kind of sets it up in an antagonistic positioning and that very easily it could be the superintendent will foster a culture versus will not foster. It just, it's, one person even said, hey, it's a double negative in here, I think, when we were talking in one session. So, you know, I think rather than focus on the, I don't like the will not, the superintendent will not, thou shalt not. I just think that that takes away from, it makes it more negative rather than keeping it overwhelmingly positive. But I do also want to ask a question about process or maybe procedure. If we don't have goals definitive as a board, it feels out of order to be discussing guardrails first before goals are definitive. Because if we were very clear with the community that these are drafts and not set in stone and that they could be changed if needed. And a couple of people gave some suggestions, and not a lot, but some did. And so if that is the case and that these are truly drafts, then we're operating as if they're set in stone by designing guardrails. So I guess I just, I just want to get a little clarification on, I feel like we're putting the cart before the horse because we haven't talked or set on goals. And I thought the goals were, I thought the guardrails were the bumpers for the goals. Do I have that wrong?
Thanks for the question, Dr. Moffett. I think I might defer to Cindy and Ray.
Yeah, so the guardrails are the prohibitions on superintendent authority grounded in the values. So they are the things that she cannot do on the path to achieving the goals. The only reason we started with the guardrail conversation first was just to, I guess in my thinking, it was that this conversation around guardrails might be the more challenging one as far as the amount of time and thought because of the nature of guardrails. So that was the process rationale as far as starting with guardrails first and then looking at the goals in the second part of our time today. And indeed, they are drafts. And so the idea being that you talk about each one and decide if you're keeping it, modifying it, or that you don't need it at all. Or if there's, if you delete, end up getting rid of one of your five, if there's a community value that you don't see represented that needs a guardrail developed for it. But just, you don't have to have five, but in case you left yourself room for that.
And if I may address the first part of the question, which was, why are these negative and not positive? They really aren't negative. They're really written more as constraints. And the reason for that is this, if you turn it around and make it, the superintendent will implement changes to the curriculum or educational resources using a fiscal analysis, then what it actually does is limits the superintendent and it becomes a directive. And so with guardrails, what you really want to do is avoid the school board giving the superintendent directives about what they will do. So it's the reason we write it this way on purpose because you can quickly go down a rabbit hole as a school board of the superintendent will hire XYZ number of teachers or the superintendent will implement this curriculum. And so you quickly go into a series of directives rather than setting up guardrails saying, here's what you want, we want you to accomplish. Here's the constraints around how we expect you to do that. But how you get there is completely up to you, which is what gives the superintendent the most freedom. So that's why they are written that way. And that's why we strongly suggest you keep them that way so that you don't get into a habit of writing directives for the superintendent.
Thank you very much, Ray. We had two other board members wanted to get a piece in, Mr. Marosky and then Vice President Jones.
I was just going to say, and to Dr. Moffett, but Ray kind of, I guess, stole my thunder, but I'll say it a different way. I had, and I talked about this in our group with Brandon, and I know we weren't supposed to go off script, so forgive me. But somebody had to say.
Mr. Marosky went off script?
I know, it's uncommon. I do very well with boxes and scripts. Anyway, so, because I didn't like, this is like a vote of confidence for how it's written. Because what I like about it is it's helped me, because this is born out of governance training, just in case anyone forgot. That's like what we're doing. And for me, after five years of doing this, the thou shall not, even though I don't necessarily like that fancy wording, it's like you won't or something, we're 21st century. But aside from the weird thou shall not, I like it because it's helped frame in my mind like what the role of governance first management is in the sense that here is what's important. You can get there however the heck you need to get there, but you can't do this. And I just think that gives, so it's just like my vote of confidence, I guess, for the way it's worded, because I do like the bandwidth it gives the superintendent as opposed to, you're going to do it this way. It's a different way of thinking for me. I'll just speak for myself.
Thank you, Mr. Marosky. Vice President Jones?
Yes, I think after hearing everybody's comments, one of the things, one of my questions is, how are we transposing what we learn in the sessions and apply it to this conversation? It feels like there's a huge piece missing. We haven't yet talked about what was the information that was provided to us by our constituents before we start talking about guardrails. And so that's missing for me. So if someone could help me with that, I'd appreciate it.
Cindy or Ray, do you want to speak to that one at all?
So I think that's, and maybe I likely was not clear about that. So having reviewed the information from your constituents and knowing what you know from that, seeing what their common, the common themes that came through across both the survey and your focus group sessions, and then looking at what you had previously drafted, is there, you know, do you still see that this is a value that is supported by that community evidence that you've collected? And if not, how does it need to be changed? Or does it need to be dropped altogether?
So if I hear you're right, Cindy, it's like for each of these guardrails, given what we heard from the community engagement and community outreach, do board members want to keep it as it's written? Do they want to remove it because it doesn't seem in line with what we heard? Or should it be modified in some way, like a keep, delete, or modify kind of prompt?
That's exactly, that's exactly it.
Okay. Does that help, Vice President? Oh, sorry, Ray.
That's okay. You're bringing to the table all of the information that you've received. So the information from all those sources to make that determination.
Thank you very much, Ray. We appreciate that. Vice President Jones, does that answer the question?
Yes and no, but I'm willing to move on until, I'm looking at the synopsis. And I think so, as Cindy was talking, I pulled the synopsis because I wanted to look at kind of what the responses were regarding the guardrails. And I think if I'm understanding it, they're saying, this is pretty much sort of the theme that we're operating from, the synopsis, and we should be thinking about how we want to apply it to this. Okay, I get that part. Thank you.
I think a good finished version of this, and again, there's no vote on this tonight. I think that the idea is to get as close to a consensus as we can and then vote on a package proposal on the fifth. And I think a good, like a best possible outcome would be, you know, either A, yes, this feels very consistent with what we heard, let's keep it. Or B, it actually doesn't feel consistent, so we're either going to get rid of it or we're going to change it in some way. And I'll just say for myself, on the first one, I personally have no problem with it whatsoever. I also don't think I heard people bring up fiscal analysis very often in the conversations that we had. So if people wanted to get rid of it, I'm also fine with that. I have a much stronger opinion about the second one, about not being inattentive to the whole child, because I do feel like that came up over and over and over and over again. And so for my part at least, I'd like to advocate that we keep number two. If people have changes in the wording they'd like to make, I'm very open to that. But I do think we heard pretty consistently, both in the focus groups that I was a part of and in the summary, that whole child is really important. Superintendent?
If I could, I'll just also just raise that, looking at the synopsis that Board Vice President was just referencing, if we looked at question number two, several of those responses in terms of the bullets reference inequity, reference equity and resources. And so if we think about the first one as a process improvement or a caveat of the last one, it might be one that we just absorb in the process for number five and remove that one as number one because it seems to be the greater feedback from the community has been, even though that's where we started as a team and that's where the board did the recommendation for the draft guardrails, it seems to be quite a bit of consensus from the community that that is an area to focus on.
Thank you, Superintendent. Vice President?
Yeah, I just have to admit, and I'm saying it with a smile, most of us have been away for like five days. And so when, it makes sense. I mean, it makes sense now what you said. And I didn't, so when I picked up the synopsis to look at it and I said, okay, Carolyn, you really haven't cross-checked these to really see. So for me, and I'm just speaking for me personally, I mean, I really would like the opportunity to just sit and look at what the community told us and then cross-check it. I hear what the superintendent says, that makes perfect sense to me, but we would have to do that for all five of these things, just have an opportunity to cross-check the information. And I hadn't had that opportunity, but it's okay.
Thank you, Vice President Jones. Others, I think that there are a number of suggestions on the table. And Ray and Cindy, if this is intruding too much on your design for our time together, tell me and we can do something different. But it seems like there's some support for the idea of making sure that fiscal analysis from number one is a part of the equity concern that's in that last guardrail and that that stays. And then that this item around whole child stays. Is there any disagreement about that from the board? And again, we're not voting on this tonight. We'll have another chance to talk about it and make changes again before we vote on it, but just to move us in a direction of getting closer to a final version. Dr. Moffett?
I think the whole child came up as a consistent theme. Again, one of these files we just got 17 hours ago, and I honestly, that is not enough time for me to go in and immerse myself in the data. I am, I think the one from Cindy we just got 17 hours ago, one of them, I would love to take some time, and we also have a board member that's not here, to really kind of go through and understand what the community said in all of those sessions. It's 171 pages, quite a bit. So it's a lot to take in, but I do think that the whole child is very consistent. I still am a little confused as to how we can define our guardrails when we don't have our goals set up. Because we could love the guardrails, but then the goal changes and then the goal, wouldn't the guardrail have to change as well or no? I'm asking.
If I can add right here, I think.
Yes, Superintendent, please. And then after you're done, I want to hear what Cindy was going to share too.
Okay, the only thing that I would add here and to Dr. Moffett's point, I understand what the question is because when we were in the initial conversation, we really talked about guardrails, I believe, after we talked about the goals. I think the difference that maybe we're not connecting, that maybe we should, that we could connect, is the guardrails, as I understand, that's why I want Cindy to clarify whether or not my thinking process is right, that the guardrails are designed as standalone from the goals, but that speak our overall values. So regardless to what we make the goals, the goals can be whatever. We can say we no longer want to look at third grade reading, we want to look at 10th grade ELA. But in terms of doing that, we don't want to change the fact that we're focusing on the whole child. So if I'm bringing as a strategy, you know, I'm going to get rid of arts and music programs to do something else in that particular area that doesn't speak to our guardrails because that's one of our values.
Thanks, Superintendent. Cindy, were you going to share something too?
No, that's what I was going to say. I think Superintendent Wright is accurate and that the guardrails, that changing the goals wouldn't necessarily cause change to the guardrails. If it is such that we'd like to move to looking at the goals, I would be willing to change that if that's the will of the board and flip that. But I think that, I think that the, I think that it's okay to continue this discussion of the guardrails, but we can flip to goals and then come back to it if we'd like.
I appreciate that, Cindy. I think we just may have board members who are in a wide variety of spaces. I know people have been in and out for a host of reasons. I think you did this to us on Monday evening. Today's Wednesday. I think some people have had a chance to go through it pretty carefully. Some people haven't yet, and that's either one, you know, is where we are, and that's okay. I think what would be helpful while we're on guardrails is we've had a chance to talk about guardrail one, guardrail two, and guardrail five. If there's anybody who has had a chance to read through the community surveys synthesis and has a perspective on three or four in terms of this is really aligned, we should keep it. This is not at all aligned, we should delete it. Or it's close, but we learned something important by listening to the community, here's how we should modify it. I do want to create some space for that. Mr. Marosky?
This one ranked high, at least on the, I know on the online survey, and it certainly came up in ours, I already kind of addressed this though, like in the ones I listened to, I think it certainly came up. And while I have the mic, so I think four needs to stay, but while I have the mic, and I don't know how to do this, after I just got done talking about how much I like the shall nots, which I do, so I don't know. shall-nots, which I do, so I don't know precisely how to do this, but I did like a suggestion from Brandon and I's group. One of the suggestions for number five was something about, the comment was that the way it reads, and for people's edification, superintendent shall not allow inequitable distribution of resources. So I think that's right. But someone just brought up how it read, and this is all in our notes, that it kind of read as if it felt like a shift of resources as opposed to reading ensuring equity to achieve success. Again, I don't know how you do that with the thou shall not, shall.
Can you just say that one more time, Mr. Maraski?
The person suggested it should read, and again, this is not right, because it's not the shall not, at least for me, which I like, that it should read something in the effect of ensure equity to achieve success. Maybe it's just some piece about achieving success. I don't know, I just thought it was a decent suggestion. I don't know how to do it, at least not yet, but that's all. But I do think number four came up quite a bit, and on the online survey, it was pretty frequently checked.
Thank you, Mr. Maraski. Mr. Craig?
Yeah, I think number four is one that, I know there were a lot of folks who felt like there should be more groups included in that, or more groups at least singled out in that. I don't know how we, like, I think we get to a certain point where we're just like, you know, shouting out everybody, like, who else needs to be in the group here? But so I think there needs to be a way that we can communicate it, that also highlights specific groups that we want to ensure, but that also doesn't leave anyone out who felt they were not included in that. And so I think that was one of the, because some of our partner groups said, I didn't see myself listed in the folks that were listed in number four. And they felt like the partners, you know, or partners who work with CPS on different projects and different programming were just as vital as the others who were listed on there.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. Mrs. Weinberg?
I will say, from going through the form and kind of just looking at the different ones, what really resonated with me or what I saw repeated a lot, it was parents asking and stating that they didn't feel heard and that they wanted more transparency. And then I think in keeping with number three, discipline came up quite a bit, and just making sure that our children and our students were being disciplined correctly and reducing the infraction. So I would say I would be in favor of keeping obviously number three and also number four as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Weinberg. Vice President Jones?
Yeah, I think I am one of those people who want to have a chance to really look in depth at the information that was given to us, but just at a glance, I still support one and five sort of being merged in some fashion. And I don't want to get rid of any of them. I think all of them, that there was pretty, there were pretty consistent themes about it. So we may only have four guardrails, or I don't know if we create a fifth one, but I think all of them could use some work in terms of clarifying what it is. For example, the measures under number four are all about surveys of parents and parent perceptions, it says nothing about students, staff, or the general community. So we need to work on that, we need to tweak that a little bit. But I don't, I like them all, so I'm advocating to keep them all, but maybe merge one and five somehow.
Thank you very, very much. And I actually hadn't noticed until you said it, the fact that all three bullets are around parents. But the groups that we're calling out in the guardrail are absolutely inclusive of parents, but also much broader than that. So thank you. Other, so I think just where we are is any other keep, modify, or deletes? I think for my part, I was, I was struck in going through the community feedback at the overlap, I mentioned this earlier, between what's, what's on here and what we heard. A lot of what, what came through felt, felt very consistent with this. I'm reading some of my notes from a session that Brandon and I did with the Cincinnati Federation of Teachers, and there were comments like, you know, we need better partnerships with the Oaks or our own career tech programs, we need better teacher training on the curriculum or principals as stronger instructional leaders. In a lot of cases, these feel important and part of how the administration gets to all these different outcomes. Not necessarily things that feel like a different set of guardrails, but if you see that differently or anybody sees that differently, I certainly invite different perspective. Mr. Craig?
I wasn't going to disagree. I think there was a lot of perspective, and each one of them that tapped into things that the superintendent can utilize as she's going about bringing the district to achieve those different, and stay within those guardrails, I guess, in this part. I will add that the, for number three, there was some trepidation, a session that Eve and I did with regard to why was it just race and gender? And then why was it not more than that? And in some cases, folks raised questions about other things like economic disparities and these type of things that might be equally as important to consider. And so again, I think it's something we keep, it's just maybe we needed, we need to figure out some wordsmithing based on the feedback to make sure that it's inclusive of all areas that we want to have as part of that guardrail.
The only thing that I would add for number four, and I note that as well, thank you, Vice President, but in terms of if we decide that we're keeping this one in, if we like the guardrails, the interim guardrails that are there, it's the surveys. So as we start our whole survey process, it is with every one of those groups right now. We don't have one set up for a community separately, so that would be one that we would have to look at, how we, you know, purposely get feedback from the community. But we, the survey process that the board approved in the last board meeting includes parents and caregivers, students, and all staff. So just, so those perception surveys, feedback session, it includes all of those groups.
Thank you, Superintendent. I saw Mr. Craig, and then we'll go to Vice President Jones.
I'm guessing Vice President Jones and I are having similar thoughts on this, but I think one of the things that may be interim guardrail or something that could be thrown in there is this idea of how do we do also the feedback and community engagement continuously?
Yes.
And so.
See, I know it, you know, go to one dinner together, it's all right.
But I think that's where some of the feedback that I was seeing in our comments was about how does the district engage me? How does the district let me know things are going on? How does the district follow up with me to see how things are working? Right? And so some of it is the surveys, some of it is also how do we communicate what programs are at different schools? Because one of the feedbacks in the session I did with Eve that I thought was actually really unique, was that this one parent said, I looked at the grade for the school, but then I looked at what they did at the school. And she said, when I saw what they, the programs they had at the school, I was like, oh my God, these are all the programs my kid needs. And so she's like, my kid's thriving at this school, regardless of what degree they received, but I wouldn't have known that if I didn't go to the school and ask. And like, I didn't get that information. And I think that's somewhat of what number four also is talking to, is, is the ways that we engage folks through, you know, through our public engagements, so like through the sessions that you're currently doing, but also through our means of communicating out when things happen, what great things are happening, how do we use the website, these type of things, as other ways that we talk to parents and communicate with them and build that, that fosters or prevent us from fostering a negative culture.
So could I propose then, because I know we do want to talk about goals a little bit too, Cindy, do you or Ray want to just play back kind of what you're, what you're taking away from this conversation about where we are on these five? And again, this is none of this is final, we'll have a chance to do this again on the fifth.
Sure. And Ray did have to leave, he sent his apologies. He had to, he's on another meeting at, at the top of the hour. So what, what I am hearing is that there is a general appetite to keep guardrails two through four, but potentially some wordsmithing around them to ensure that they are actually capturing the community values and, and what you heard through those listening sessions and through the surveys. That there is also the thought about using guardrail one in some other fashion, whether it be a process improvement or as a merge in to number five. And then also ensuring that the interim guardrails on number four speak to the full breadth of the guardrail language. So those are the things that, that I've captured. Is there anything that I missed?
I think with the caveat that people may have additional feedback once they've gone through all the responses. But what you said is consistent with what I heard. Does anybody have a different perspective? Okay.
The one, the one thing I do also want to add.
I think I missed somebody. Did, was there another comment?
So I did, I wanted to just clarify, that was what Cindy heard us say, but not the synopsis from the community, right? So I'm looking here, like, there's a lot of other stuff, Brandon's point, from the community about guardrails. And again, I'm just doing a cursory view, but there, there's, someone said, you know, change the word minority. Like, like there's some things that, that we could tweak, we could really, really tweak, but what Cindy just repeated was from what we heard. Was that your question? I want to make sure.
Yeah, I think, I think it's, what I'm trying to be thoughtful about is we have, I think, board members who have done different amounts of work with what came through from the community survey. So like, of the people who have had a chance to go through it and reflect it and share feedback with Cindy, that's what she was sharing, with the idea that there may be some other feedback from board members who haven't had a chance to do that yet, who should also get a chance to share their feedback with Cindy and have that reflected in the final version. Okay. So I think we're, we're good to go to goals.
One more thing before, before we move on to goals, that I just want to remind everyone is that as you're reading through and thinking about what you heard, there are a lot of folks who probably suggested strategies for, for that communication, or, or for whatever it is. And just want to remind you that those, while they're important, and it's important to have heard them, they might be, some of that stuff might be more relevant to how the superintendent will develop strategy around how things are communicated in order that this, for example, the survey data might come back more positive, that folks are feeling communicated with in a way that helps them understand what's happening in the district or what have you. So just remind, just being thoughtful about differentiating between strategy and a value to be protected. So as you're further, as you're thinking about this and processing through it, after, and taking more time with the survey and community input information, just, just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you, Cindy. I think Vice President Jones has a reaction.
Yes, I promise, this is my last comment on this. But I think Cindy is absolutely correct, and I think board members will agree that oftentimes during these sessions, we got a lot of information. And I, in my sessions, I was very clear in saying to the folks we were talking to, that sounds more like a strategy. However, I also said, but it's valuable to us. And so I am asking, and this is for us to consider, is that maybe as we're going through this to tweak this, that we might have sort of a parking lot of strategies that people are suggesting to us. Not that the board itself will do this or develop those strategies, but maybe as a reference point for the superintendent as she's beginning to think about how to implement, we just give that to her, and just so that she can see what, what folks are asking. That was our, sort of the parking lot discussions.
I think that's great. Thank you. Mr. Maraski?
Can I, I just want to thank you, President Lindy. I just want to highlight Vice President Jones. We, I was part of one session that was almost 100% strategy.
Yes.
Said with great respect, yeah, we were, yeah, we were together. And it said with great respect, and a lot of the strategies, quite frankly, were pretty helpful. And I think, yeah, if we can disaggregate this somehow, have that over here, superintendent you may not use it, but then it's also just good. I know I am an executor. Anyway, I would like to know, you know, in like my day job, what all of my members, for example, might think before I'm going to decide, right? It's a helpful thing to have, I'd imagine. So yeah, I think it's a good idea.
Thank you, Mr. Maraski. Every time I've tried to suggest we move on, I've been wrong. Anybody else have anything else? And these were good. Let me be clear, thank you. I think it's, I think we're better for those comments, and I'm not in a rush. Anything else before we keep moving? Cindy, you want to take us through goals?
Yeah, so I think we're gonna go through the next, or go through a similar process and then, and have Superintendent Wright talk about the percentages that have been added to the goals, as well as those targets for each year, and then what would be looked at as interim goals for progress monitoring. So we can do this if, however it's helpful, if it's a goal by goal, and then thinking about that with, along with the community input you have, to see if these are still looking like the goals that the board, the board has in mind, that they still represent the vision of the community. So if we want to start with goal one, and Superintendent Wright, if you would like to explain the, the percentages and the data that you've added, turn it over to you.
Thank you, Superintendent Wright. Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you. So I do want to just call the only difference in this document and the document that you received is what I sent had interim goals based on my feedback from Cindy. So where it says now on number one, for example, where it says interim target, on what I sent to you that said interim goal. So Cindy, I am correct that that is the way that, that should be the target, right? Okay. And then the interim goals would be the information or the data that we review along the way to indicate whether or not we are moving in the right direction toward our target. So I changed the word from target to goal, same exact information. I did add, and we've already talked about in each of our, that in our COW sessions, after we get our baseline information, BOY, I use as beginning of the year data, and then MOY as middle of the year data, after we get that data, we would be reviewing that information. I just added that to this document so that we would know that's what we would be looking at to determine whether or not we are moving in the right direction in terms of the overall target. So with the first, if we are looking at third grade reading, started with the 45%. Where the 45% comes from, right now, we know that that is not where we are as a district on number one. Right? Okay. The percent of third grade proficient reading on the OST will increase from 45% on June 2023 to 61% June 2027. The 45% is not where we are now. The 45% is based on what we put in, what we agreed on for my evaluation for this year. And so that gives us a baseline, that would be our baseline. So I'm, we're projecting all of these numbers right now, because I don't know where we'll end up at the end of 2023. So we will, you know, likely have to do some modifications at that point. When you look at the way that the interim targets, and Cindy, you wanted me to talk through interim targets or just through the interim goals?
I think just through interim goals would be all right, unless, unless board members have questions on the other.
Okay, great. So for the interim goals, for each time, each cadence that we look at, we would review our beginning of the year and mid, middle of the year assessment data, and that's whether we're using iReady, MAP, or whichever assessment we're using as our benchmark district-wide assessment. I also add an additional interim goal here that correlates to the overall draft goal in number two. The interim goal here was to also look at our third grade performance by ethnicity, because one of the goals that we have as we move into number two, I think two is, I wrote it twice, but number two is on top of them. The current racial achievement gap for students in grade six, so I thought if we start monitoring that in third grade in terms of ethnicity, it would put us on the path to really review that information as we're expecting a certain goal by sixth grade. So that was the feedback for the first. And I just gave some baseline information for what that looks like right now.
Thank you, Superintendent Wright. So is, is the thought Cindy, same kind of approach, you know, for, for each of one through five, based both on what we're hearing from the superintendent with the targets in interims, but then also what for people who had a chance to go through the community summary or the, or the individual responses? For each of one through five, does this feel right? Keep it? Does it feel totally wrong? Get rid of it? Does it feel sort of right? We should modify it in some way? Is that the right prompt for folks?
That's right.
So then, I guess, just open up for, for board member feedback. Keep, modify, delete. And then same, I think, caveat that if folks haven't had a chance to go through the synthesis yet, there'll be another chance to share feedback. Mr. Craig?
So this first one is one that, at least in the sessions that I looked at in the review, that I think everyone seemed to have a lot of, a lot of strong opinions that this is one that should be part of our radar, especially begin because of the early childhood learning processes shows that if they fall behind here, then they fall behind even further along the path. The one thought that I had in, in all of our goals, I think we have to put the goal out there, but I think it also needs to be something that explains at least a thought behind why that is our goal, some type of narrative that may be helpful to the community to see. And that's part of where I think some of the interims might be a good way to communicate that importance, because as we're showing folks that we're mapping their growth along the way, I think parents will feel better about it. I think kids will be, feel better about it. I think it makes it more sense to folks that communicates that vision a little bit more in depth, because there were several folks that understood third grade, but they're like, why don't we look at second grade also? Why don't you look at first grade also? Why don't you look at kindergarten? And it was like, well, these, this is a measuring point that is part of how we also are evaluated as a district, but also how we are looking at where your next transition and your educational steps go. So I think it's helpful to give maybe a little explanation or narrative to each of our goals at a later date.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. Other board members have keep, modify, or delete perspective? Vice President Jones?
I just want to comment, I agree with what member Craig said, and I do want to say to the superintendent, just to respond, as a result of some of the conversation I heard in the engagement sessions about the metrics that we use in defining the population. So the way it's broken out here is exactly what I heard people say they wanted. So not lump all things under the terminology minority or special populations or whatever, but to actually break it out as specific as possible, which is what it's, what that indicates. So, and, and through, and that should probably be throughout all of the goals, I would think.
Thank you, Vice President Jones. Any other keeps, modifies, or deletes based on what people have had a chance to review so far? I got a thumbs up from Mr. Maraski, but do you want to say a little bit about what the thumbs up was? Keep, keep them all. Okay. I, I, I can share from, from my perspective that there really was strong overlap between what the goals are and what, both the focus groups I did and what I read in the summary. I think specifically there were, there were comments about having a strong rigor across all schools. I, I think that that speaks to making sure that all kids can read on grade level and that we are eliminating race-based achievement gaps. I think there's also was a lot that came up about career tech, and a lot that came up about bridging high school graduation to a real, meaningful, long-term career. And people say that in different kinds of ways, but I love the fact that we have a secondary outcome on here. I think that's really important. I was, I was willing to say yes to the graduation goal because the superintendent made this point about the state report card, but it was really interesting. If you look through the summary, I think Cindy did a nice job of tallying, you know, when people were asked to say which goal was most important, how many people said goal one? How many people said goal two? Well, the most popular one was third grade reading. The second most popular was graduation rate. And so I think that's, I think, even more evidence for me that it's worth keeping on there. So I think, I'm, I will share with you all that I think it's important to me that we make some changes based on what we heard. You know, like, I would raise my eyebrow at a process if something looks exactly the same after the community engagement. But I will also share with you that based on what I read and what I heard, there's like a lot of overlap. So I, I'm gonna ask just for your help between now and, and, you know, when we finalize these, because I'd like to be able to show people that we listen. But I also want to acknowledge that there was a lot of overlap between what we have and what we heard from people. And if people had heard, had a wildly different experience, I really would like you to share that, because my experience is just my own. Mr. Craig?
So one thing I did hear, and I don't know that we have it in our goals, but I don't know how we put it in our goals either. And so I, it's just a goal that we don't have listed in there. Is anything centered around something that's not math and English? Because almost all of our goals are either centered around math or English or your graduation kind of structure. And so what some folks raised was that, you know, are we really trying to prepare students to just get through and graduate and that's it? Is that the minimum level we are trying to get them to? Or are we trying to create a productive whole child that is functioning in our, in, in the world beyond high school? And so, again, I don't know where that goal fits in there. I think also just to reiterate something I said just a few minutes ago, though, the explanation for Algebra I might also be something that's really helpful for people to understand, because on several sessions I did, they're like, why do y'all care about Algebra I? Like, I don't use Algebra nowhere. And so explaining to folks that you needed to graduate was a really important, like, oh, oh, that's why you have that on there. Okay. So I mean, I think that gets into a little bit of us being able to explain what our goals are and why.
Thanks, Mr. Craig. Other, Superintendent?
I was just gonna add, and I think Board Member Craig made this comment earlier, but I do really think it's important that once we determine what, what the goals and guardrails are going to be, that we add a lot of explanation around the, the process and around the focus. Because one of the things that I shared, and I, and I want to make sure that we share, and we've shared this in every, you know, conversation that we've had, while these may be the areas of primary focus, i.e., we're monitoring these for goals, it doesn't mean we're no longer concerned about math, or it doesn't mean we're no longer concerned about the arts, or we're no longer concerned about science. And so it allows us to have some foundational conversations, to pick, you know, three or five things that we're focused on as a superintendent and board team, so we really can do, make sure that we are getting in as deeply as we can and getting our students on a, a solid foundation in at least those areas, but the other things are still important. So I think that for everything that we put out, you know, working with, with the Council of Great City Schools team, working with our communications team, I also see a space where after this is done, we then have more series of community conversations to then explain just that. So kind of the same format, where even the board is, is doing some of that. It's kind of the same groups, going back to those groups and really explaining, this is what we decided on, this is what it means, but it doesn't mean that those other things aren't important.
Thank you, Superintendent. Other, I think if, if people have other keeps, modifies, or deletes, please share them. If they don't, I was gonna ask if Cindy could just play back kind of what you're taking away from us today, with the idea that for folks who haven't had a chance to read through the community feedback yet, they'll have a chance to share their feedback too.
Sure. So I think what I'm hearing around, what I've heard around the goals is that there might be some, again, some tweaking, for example, language, minority language, and, what else did I write down? And then also having, just being very clear as you communicate back with the community on what these goals mean, on why you landed on them, what, why Algebra is important, for example, and, and then being very clear as to why, even though other things may not have been chosen in these five goals as areas of focus, that those things are still important. I think I want to pull back in, and I do appreciate what Superintendent Wright said about, you know, really honing in on getting communication out and maybe having even the same types of, of focus groups or what have you to go back out and, and do that communication and explanation, and thinking about what Dr. Moffett shared at the beginning of our time, and, you know, being very intentional about that communication in different languages and, and all of those different aspects that she brought up as far as process improvements and, and such. Did I miss anything with that? I think also the other thing I will add is that, just in looking at, at the interim, both the interim goals and guardrails ideas, I think continued refinement of, of those, that was another thing I think I heard as well, you know, to ensure that people are understanding that even if it's third grade reading, the earlier grade reading is important in, grade level reading is important in being able to even reach that third grade reading goal. Did I miss anything? Was there anything else I need to note?
Yeah, Mr. Craig?
It's not something that you missed, I think it's something we didn't say, but I wanted to add on the interim goals with regard to the graduation. Can we also add something in there with regard to the SEALs? Because those are also a part of the process. So I mean, I think, looking at that holistic view of what is all part of the graduation requirements, that making sure there's something in there for each part of that as an interim goal, just so that we can be able to communicate that better out to, because there was some question that came to us as to what is, what do you, what is required to graduate? Like, what do you, you said finish school, right? Like, you just finished 12th grade and you're done, you graduated. And it was like, no, we were talking about these measures and how you graduate on that. And so just make sure our interim goals can hit on the other requirements.
One of the things I want to remind is that the superintendent owns the interim goals, and there are one to three interim goals per goal. Not that those other things won't be, again, aren't important and won't be monitored internally or that there won't be data, you know, data on those, but getting all of those things as an interim goal probably would not, would not be ideal, but deciding on which are the, which are the most critical in assuring that a student is going to graduate with that CPC or graduate with all of the requirements. And I think that'll be part of that, continued refining it.
Thank you, Cindy. Thank you. Mr. Craig? Superintendent?
The one last thing for me is since we're not doing them individually, we're kind of talking about all of them, I do want to note in the second one that there, when I saw this information that was provided for me and digging in, this 60% is not correct in terms of a baseline number, it's quite a bit lower than that. So I just want to call that out. So before we get to our final numbers, I have the team working now, we've had to do some contact to the state to get some of that information as well, because we don't currently have a system that monitors some of that. But I did want to make sure that, that we know as a collective that that 60%, the percent of minority students graduating with CCP credit or a workforce credential is not accurate. That number is not accurate.
So I think this is a good segue, I think, to maybe a timeline for what people could expect to see and when, as we just start to move forward, because there's going to be some work that needs to happen, whether that's on getting updated data or kind of synthesizing some of the feedback, inviting additional feedback as people have a chance to read through the community synthesis and the survey responses and the focus group notes. What I was gonna suggest, and I think this is a question for Cindy and for the superintendent, is would it, today is the 16th, it's a Wednesday. Next week is a weird week because we have the Thanksgiving holiday. I really would like to make sure people have this updated version with plenty of time to look through it and read it, so that we could come ready to have a good discussion and a vote on the 5th of December. So my question is, would it be possible to have an updated version to people? And by updated version, I mean two things. It would include any changes based on feedback from the board tonight, and any changes to numbers that the superintendent would like to suggest by, this is somewhat arbitrary, but I was thinking the 29th of November, which is the Tuesday of the week we get back. So that would be the rest of this week, the two workdays next week, and then the Monday workday of the week of the 28th. That would give people a week to look at this, ask questions, form their own opinion, and then give them a full week with it before they came back on the 5th. Does that work for you, Cindy? Does that work for you, Superintendent Wright?
I have a question first. So I, I want to make sure that in the guardrails, other than the continued focus, continued feedback on community engagement, that was one that came up for number four, are we looking to, when we come back together, will that be a time to come back to actually vote? Or that the board will be voting on the goals and guardrails? Or that, will that be another discussion time?
The 5th is our last business meeting for this calendar year. I would love for us to vote in that meeting. I have a feeling you're asking because you're worried that won't work, and so there may be a problem with it that I'm open to.
No, I just want to, I, I'm, my question is, I, you know, I, I put in information that I thought might be the information that board members would want to see, but I, if I don't get any feedback on these in terms of interim guardrails, do we go with these interim guardrails? Do we update them before then? I don't know if the, if this is what the board is looking for. Are we comfortable with these?
So what I, what I was imagining was that people, what would come to board members on the 28th is something that you, Superintendent, are recommending, based on everything you've heard and based on, on the, and then we could, we could, on the 5th, talk about it.
Okay.
But, but it would be with the intention that like, that here is a proposal, does anyone want to make a, like a motion to modify it? And then we do that, we use Robert's rules and we work through it. And so of course, if, if people want to, you know, make motions and make changes, we could do that, but that we would use that process to get to a final version by the end of the meeting on.
Okay, so, so if it's, so if, if that is the case, then for, from my side of it, you know, having the updates to the draft goals and guardrails by DOB on the 29th is fine for me.
Thank you. And Mr. Craig?
Just to clarify, the only thing that we're voting on is the board's goals and guardrails. So the interim goals and guardrails, I don't think we vote on, because those are the superintendent's.
That's the way I understand it, but I, I did want to have an idea as to whether or not that was what the board was looking for. But yes, I think that that was one thing that, that Cindy shared as well.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you for that, Mr. Craig. So maybe I should clarify what I was saying, that, that whatever it is, we're going to be asked to vote on.
Okay.
That, that would, and, and we can make additional changes to it at the meeting on the 5th, when people have a week to look at it and think about it. But, but could they get a proposal on the 29th that would then give people a week to think about it before the 25th, before the 5th, excuse me?
So for clarity, you still want me to send the interim goals and guardrails anyway, but we're only voting on the actual, the board will only be voting on, when they vote, on the actual goals and guardrails?
That is my understanding, but I'm looking at my colleagues and I'm looking at Cindy in case I'm wrong. I am often wrong.
Yes, so that, so the board would just vote on the goals and guardrails. Superintendent Wright, whatever modifications to interim goals and interim guardrails to that thinking can also be brought, just to ensure that the board has clarity on how that, especially for the guardrails, how those are being interpreted, what that, especially for the guardrails, how those are being interpreted, what type of information, what that, the meaning that the superintendent is making of those guardrails that you're giving her. And then the recommendation also would include, and I want to make sure this is what, that I'm clear on this part, the recommendation would also include potential wordsmithing to some of the guardrails themselves?
Yes.
Yeah, yes, and I can, and I can work with the superintendent on that, on some of that wordsmithing of those for that recommendation. And the timing works fine.
Thank you, Cindy. I think it's, I want to just express my gratitude to my colleagues, to the superintendent, to Cindy, for working really six months, I think, to get us to where we are. And I'm trying to balance two things, which is to move a process forward, but also make sure people have time to look and think and vote, like, having had a chance to do the prep that they want to do. And so I appreciate it. Anything else on this topic tonight, Cindy? Are we forgetting anything or board members?
No, and I think, I don't think so. I think the thing that, what I would say as far as next steps as well, and this might be a topic for the point people group, but also with, definitely with input from the board as you go, is really thinking about that communication piece to come after and start to maybe bullet out some ideas on that and what needs to be said and who it needs to be said to and all of that. So as you're thinking, as board members are thinking about this, if there's input on that, things that they want to be noting to make sure, make sure it gets communicated and on the list as that communication is being developed. That would be all I would have.
Great. Well, thank you so much for sharing your time with us this evening, we appreciate it.
You. Thanks, everyone.
Yeah, thank you. Feel free to join us for the next Superintendent, the schools, and Report of the Treasurer, or if you have other plans, that's okay. We'll keep on moving with our evening. I think before we do the Superintendent of Schools recs and Report of the Treasurer, I think, were there any questions? We don't have an enormous amount of time, but we have a little bit of time. Were there any other questions board members had that they wanted to ask about tonight?
Are you talking about in general or about this process?
This was about other topics, any other topics separate from goals and guardrails. Mrs. Weinberg, did you have a question? Ah, thank you, yes. That's okay.
So I do have a question, but we can wait, or do you want me to go ahead and?
It's entirely up to any board members to have anything they wanted to ask about.
Well, I wanted at least the report to go first. Okay. So I, I'll go ahead and ask.
Great, thank you.
I have a question, it's regarding student achievement. We have gotten several emails and actually just received something else regarding testing and exams. So I know that the school, well, the district has gone 50-50, except for one particular school or two or three. And the question is, they are concerned in terms of how they can possibly get something turned on within Power School to make sure that they can input final exam grades. And there's been a very, I guess, confusion, or it's very hard for teachers to put these grades in, and they're asking if there is a way that this option can be turned back on in Power School to make it easier for them.
Thank you, Mrs. Weinberg. Superintendent Wright?
So I think what you're referencing are the semester exams?
Yeah, and so I was actually trying to pull it up on my phone too, but it's the semester exams in which you're doing grades for first quarter and second quarter, and a particular school has awaited, their exams awaited, and they want to be able to put it into Power School, but the option has been turned off. So I guess the question is, why has the option been turned off and can that option be reinstated?
So the administrative decision was made after review from the committee and recommendations from the committee, there was, and the committee actually started meeting before I got here, so these came as recommendations, that there was concern about overtesting in terms of across the board, the way that students were being tested. So one of the, there was one school that was, one of our high schools, one grade level, one subject area in one of the high schools that was not in support, social studies, to be exact, of the, of not having a semester exam, because they had always had a semester exam. And so the decision was made that it goes back to the individual I L T at the schools for them to determine how they will do semester exams at their schools, and then they would include semester exams as a part of their overall grade, as a part of their waiting for their grades. So there would not be a separate, i.e., we have across the district, you know, different schools that have different expectations around the semester exam. They can still give the semester exam, but they would include it as a part of their grade versus a standalone grade on the actual report card.
So I think the question is, as they're trying to put that grade into Power School, there is a particular section where they can put it in, which has been turned off.
That's correct, because it doesn't show up on the report card anymore as a separate grade. It's a part of their overall quarter grade. They have a first quarter grade and second quarter grade, so if they're doing a semester exam, in most instances, they would make it a part of their second quarter grade, so it doesn't show on the report card as a separate semester exam grade, because we're not doing that across the district.
So it's put into the second quarter, it's weighted into the second quarter?
Correct.
You know, the concern is, is that it's not able to do that right now, there's some confusion. I'm not sure.
So the only thing that they are not able to do is enter it as a semester grade, because across the district, we don't have a separate semester grade for our coursework for testing. So at the individual school site, if the I L T decided that they still wanted to give semester exams at their schools, they would still do that, but they would make those grades a part of their second quarter grades in terms of weighting.
Thank you. I'm not sure if there's any other clarification needed.
I'll get back to you.
If I do.
Thanks, Mrs. Weinberg. And if I have questions, we can certainly bring them up too. I think if, just looking at the time, I want to make sure we get our chance to motion and discuss any questions about the two reports. Is there a motion, do we have any retirements this evening, first of all? No retirements? Is there a motion to accept the recommendations of the superintendent, please?
I will, that we accept the recommendations of the superintendent.
Thank you very much, Vice President. Is there a second? Mr. Morosky? Thank you. Any discussion on the recommendations of the superintendent? Hearing none. Ms. Wagner, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. We need a motion to accept the report of the treasurer this evening.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Morosky. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Vice President Jones. Any discussion on the report of the treasurer? Ms. Wagner, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. So our two reports are approved. Do we have any other last questions before we adjourn? Appreciate everybody's time this evening. Having no other business before us, I declare I'm being adjourned.